This conference will now be recorded.
Reverend Elliott, can you all hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
I am hearing nothing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour has arrived for us to begin our regular schedule of retreat. At this time, we are best to have.
Reverend Elliott, excuse me, Reverend Elliott, excuse me, this is Tim Calhoun. I cannot hear you.
Clergymen among us.
We are getting a robotic sound, Reverend Elliott. Getting kind of robotic sound from real.
Rocky Hawk Methodist Church, he is my grist. So I'm going to get away to Mr. Drew.
Demonic, you may need to just call again because it's very sporadic. Start all over.
What's happening?
I just want to say, Ms. Little, this is the line. We were asking Mr. Elliott to dial in versus using the audio connected from his internet-connected device. So just a second, he should be back in on the line. We'll start from the beginning, okay? Apologize for that.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
There's some background noise.
I am muted on my.
We're getting that little bird sound like.
Yeah, that's not too much, Elliott. I'll find your lines out right now. Should be resolved in just a second. So when it's speakers, we'll find out right now. Yep, all right. Let's see.
All right, can you all hear me now?
I can.
I can.
I can hear you, but I still hear that noise.
Yeah, the little tweet sound.
Like somebody is talking in a different conversation.
Someone has.
Yeah, for all callers who have dialed in, please make sure your lines are on mute if you're not on the Board of Supervisors or someone that's presenting today. Please, all callers that have dialed in, please mute your lines if you're not a part of the Board of Supervisors panel or if you're not presenting today. Because we have, we're getting interference from someone who had speakers connected, maybe trying to listen through an external speaker. That's what's causing feedback in that moment. Elliott, if you have speakers on your laptop, maybe you want to turn those down as well, too, just a little bit. Then maybe. I think we're in a good place to start now. It should be good, Miss Elliott. Thanks.
Okay. The hour has arrived, past hours to begin our meeting. So at this time, we are pleased to have with us a visiting clergyman, a pastor of Rocky Hawk Methodist Church. And he is the pastor, Mr. Drew. So we're going to ask Mr. Drew to introduce his pastor to lead us in our invocation.
Reverend Pritzinger, are you there? Reverend Pritzinger? Mr. Elliott, Reverend Elliott?
Yeah. No, I'm here.
Okay. This is Reverend Cliff Pritzinger from Rocky Hawk Methodist Church down in the Denver and Walls Bridge District of Little Surrey. And pleased that you could join us this evening, so if you could give the invocation.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. Let us pray. Almighty God, Creator of all things, we love you and thank you for this blessed day. Thank you for this opportunity to gather electronically together in your presence in this time of social distancing due to the pandemic of COVID-19. We pray for healing of the sick, peace in time of grief and mourning over those who have passed on. Safety for medical teams, transportation personnel, first responders, administrators, national, state, city, and local officials as they tend to those in need and make decisions which affect the well-being of the people. Lord be merciful. Be with us each of these board members this evening as they conduct the business at hand which determines the operating budget for Surrey County. May their minds be set on you as they seek guidance and direction in the decision-making process. May their hearts be at peace and their conduct be fitting to their position. May the outcome of their time together not only be what is best for the people of Surrey, but bring glory and praise to you and benefit your kingdom here on earth. Father, may the men and the women of this board walk out of this gathering this evening with heads held high, knowing that they were a good witness to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And through the power of the Holy Spirit, their word through testimony was pleasing in your sight and worthy to the position in which you have placed them. May all praise and glory be yours, Almighty Father, now and forever. In Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Pritzinger.
Through our occasion, we at this time call our meeting to order and we ask for a moment of silence. We at this time recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fellow board members, we have before us the agenda for our meeting on tonight. After reviewing this agenda, we now would entertain a roll call vote for the adoption of the agenda for the meeting on tonight. Ms. Chapman.
Yes, sir. Roll call, Mr. Elliott.
Yes.
Mr. Drewry.
Yes.
Ms. Little.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun.
Yes. All right. Thank you, thank you for the roll call vote. At this time, the first item of business on our meeting is the budget discussion for the year 2021. And so at this time, we're going to turn the meeting over to our county administrator, Ms. Rollins, to present to us on tonight.
Good evening, members of the board and all of the citizens virtually. It is my pleasure again this evening to come before you and the citizens to discuss the county's budget for fiscal year 2021. This is the one that was planned at your last meeting to continue deliberations on the budget. I would not go, I hope everyone can see the screen. I would not go into a lot of detail regarding what was presented at the last meeting, but I do think it's important to share. I do think it's important to share with the board and with the public that when the county administrator received the budget request of various agencies and organizations and from various departments, that the requested budget was over $30,650,000. The initial recommended budget from the county administrator that was presented to you on last week, about $1.6 million was deducted from those requests. And I presented to you a recommended budget that totaled $29,013,879. Now, if you can. Now, if you can look at the column to the right, you can see that the majority of the $1.6 million change was a result largely of personnel costs in which the positions that were requested were not recommended for funding due to the limitations of revenue in the ensuing fiscal year. The other categories that you see there in terms of purchase services, you can see where the amount was not funded, followed by materials and supplies, other expenditures, outside agencies which represent a significant portion of our budget. You can see where the request of over $100,000 was not funded for outside agencies. Capital outlay, a small amount. And that transfers out to the schools, to social services, and to the various other funds in the county. You can see there where recommendations were not made for those transfers out to all those other funds. So again, the recommended budget was $1.6 million less than what was requested. In the next slide, you can see those requested positions. I did want to share with the board that these are the positions and the personnel salary changes that were requested by the various departments that were not recommended in the initial county administrator's budget. And again, the total was over $640,000. And they included several positions for our sheriff, courthouse security, a secretary assistant for the sheriff's office, the clerk of court additional pay, the registrar requested a conversion from part-time to full-time. I mean, athletic coordinator's position also from part-time to full-time, part-time maintenance staff. And also in economic development and tourism, there was some requests for some changes from part-time to full-time in economic development. And also to add a second part-time person to the visitor center. Due to funding constraints, none of those positions were recommended in the initial budget. I wanted to share again that our outside agencies do represent a large portion of the county's budget. The county for fiscal year 20 contributed over $1.15 million to the various agencies. A lot of these pertain to public safety. Some of them are relative to health and welfare in the county and also economic development. But again, if you look at the particular slide, you can see here where. You can see where. I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my slide. There we go. You can see here where the fiscal year 20 requested amount was $1.2 million. The initial recommendation was $1.09 million. And as you can see, there's a reduction of $147,000 in the initial recommendation. Now, one of the things I do want to say about our agencies and organizations, board members and others, hard decisions were made in terms of recommendations this year for our outside agencies. The reason again, because of the funding that we had to work with. And also, I think it's important that often we take a harder look and see exactly where the county is contributing to some of these agencies just to make sure they are bringing value to the county. As you know, a lot of times when we have these agencies or organizations come before you, the county certainly entertains their requests. And often, we want to be very responsive and responsive to their needs. By the same token, I think it's important that we take a good look at the agencies and organizations that we are funding. In different slides, I can go over a little bit more detail regarding exactly the ones that are being recommended for funding elimination. And I just want to point out a few of those. The Willsbury Area Transit was one of those. And this is something that has been in our budget for quite some time. And we hear sometimes from the public and also from the board members as far as the ridership as it pertains to Willsbury Area Transit. This is something that we boasted upon years ago. We definitely wanted to show that the county was agreeable to having some type of transportation vehicle in for our citizens. But in terms of our ridership and talking with the executive director, it is not that significant. So if you look at the number of citizens who are riding and you divide it by the $40,000 annual contribution that we're making, we have to make a decision as to whether or not this is something that the county wants to continue funding. The Virginia Gateway Region is another one of the agencies in terms of the value they bring to the county. You've heard the position from the executive director at a previous meeting, Mr. Keith Boswell, who came to us and talked about the value that they felt that was bringing to the county in terms of economic development. The Blackwater Regional Library, we do know that we certainly enjoy and we appreciate and we value the services that we have for our library. One of the reasons why we reduced the contribution in our Blackwater Regional Library is twofold. Number one, they requested additional monies in their budget for salary increases as well. And another, I want to point out in terms of not just the library, but for some other agencies and organizations, is that we have to have an opportunity to look at the contracts and agreements that we are engaged in with these organizations. Because some of them date back five, six, or seven-plus years. And I can tell you, it does take some stewardship on the hands of the member localities who are part of these agreements to say, look, it's a time for us to kind of sit down and take another look at these agreements just to make sure that we have efficiencies in place. The Blackwater Regional Library, for an example, the citizenship of their contract and their request to the county was based on 7,000, and I believe 153 citizens in Surrey. And they are to use the Weldon Coopers population from 2010. And we know right now that that is not the number of citizens who are in Surrey. But that's the formula that they use to formulate their requests. So I just want to point that out as an example as to why perhaps their request, you know, is a little bit more than what the county may think it should be at that time. But again, they are showing a recommended reduction in the current contribution that we are providing them. The last one that I would point out for the purpose of time is the Shawan River Basin. That was another agency whereby the city of Franklin is the financial agent. And we just don't believe that the Surrey County receives a lot of benefit from having the Shawan River monitored. And that's a member agreement that we had in place for some time. So I just want to kind of give an overview that that is some of the reasons why we take a look at these agencies as far as the value. And I got to point one of them out, I apologize, but the Penis Oil and Water Controvation District. This is another one that the county, of course, has always supported. And looking at their funding requests, I saw a lot of duplication there. We have a Virginia Cooperative Extension Office in the county whereby it's partly funded by the state and some funding from the county. And some of the same services that are provided by the Penis Oil and Water District are also some of the services that we believe we can get from Virginia Cooperative Extension. And for disclosure, there could be some agencies or organizations on here that we have not taken the time to fully realize operational impact based on the recommended reduction. But again, in light of having to make some strong decisions as far as coming back with a budget that would be fitting without a lot of extra costs, these were the decisions that were made at this time. But I would be more than happy to entertain any others that you may have questions on at the end of the presentation. Closing the gap, the previous budget did include an unfortunate increase in the county's real estate tax rate. The county administrator's budget was proposed on the 16th to go from a 71 cents per $100 assessed value to 74 cents. And at that particular time, we outlined several reasons why that particular tax rate was proposed. Since that time, I was given a charge by the board to come up with some different options to show what the budget may look like without any tax rate increase. I wanted to provide just a couple of options for your consideration on this evening. And the options do include, as directed, is to look at the budget if we were not to include a three cents tax rate increase. But also worked with Ms. Wendell to come up with some other options to say if we had a two cents and a one cent. And this was pretty much just to provide you, the board, with additional information so that you can see some of the funding impacts and some of the operational impacts on the decisions that we may have to end up making when it's decided as to what the tax rate would be for the ensuing fiscal year. So there were options for closing the gap. And there's two things we have to do, of course. We can cut expenditures or we have to find ways to increase the revenue. We do want to point out that Surrey County, in terms of looking at our taxes, in terms of looking at our fees, and this is something that I hope the board can, in one way, be proud of in terms of history and how the county has kept our tax rate low. But again, looking at some other jurisdictions and looking at their tax and fees, Surrey County does fare favorably. The mills taxes, and I know that you have heard this come up from other areas whereby referendums were required or localities to have mills taxes. This has changed in the upcoming budget. We learned as of, what, yesterday perhaps, that now new legislation does require your local, excuse me, does permit localities to charge a mills taxes. This is one of the ways that if the county want to think about it now or want to think about it in the future in terms of diversifying the county revenue source, this is one way that we can get additional revenue in the county. We can look at some other options that were not introduced to you in the budget on the 16th. And that includes minor changes to personal property, machinery tools, the vehicle license fee, and also, along with the mills tax, new legislation on cigarette taxes which the county does not currently have. In terms of closing the gap, in closing the gap, earlier I indicated that I will present to you three options. And those three options are listed here. If you look at the first column in terms of the three cents, if we were to cut three cents from the total budget, I wanted to provide some options. And the first section there shows you some full-time positions that we can eliminate from the budget. The HR manager's position, this is salary and fringe benefits. The special assistant to the administrator, which was proposed in the recommended budget. At the same token, it was proposed to eliminate the assistant county administrator's position. So that was actually a reduction, but again, that was a new position. If you all recall, in previous budget cycle, you did elect to fund an additional position in our sheriff's office. And that was about $66,000 in salary and fringe benefits. And that was for the investigator position. And also, I want to point out that the county fully funds a school resource officer. Now, I do not know exactly when the timeframe ended, but I just want to disclose that that was a grant-funded position at one point. And after the grant ran out, we still elected to, of course, employ the deputy who serves as that school resource officer. And for disclosure, but none of these positions, and we advocating a removal of them. But I think it's just important for us to kind of show just the impact on the personnel section of the budget by looking at these various positions. One of them that I did not include here, if you recall last year, also that the board elected to fund another full-time position in our district court office. And that was because of the caseload that was associated with, you know, with that office and providing the recommended support to be able to fund that particular office. And I say that to say that when we put these positions, of course, you know, in the previous budget, we have to think about the ongoing impact of how they impact ensuing year's budget in terms of both salaries and fringe benefits. So those are the things that I want to list there in terms of the full-time position requests and reductions at this time. Also, for, I guess, for all offices to sort of kind of feel used to repaying right now of perhaps making some additional cuts if we have to in terms of eliminating some of the expenditures in the budget. We took a look at all the part-time funding. Now, we all know that we do support our constitutional officers in terms of providing local dollars. The state probably provides about two-thirds of the total cost. And they may have changed, it may even be less than that. But the county does provide significant dollars to support our constitutional officers. It may be one-third. But this is just something shown here that if we were to make some cuts, that this would be the impact for commissioner revenue and our registrar and our clerk of court who all have part-time funding in their particular budgets. Going back up, I missed one above with the full-time position, the treasurer's office. There is a vacant position right now that has not been filled. So just listed there. And that's the reason why you don't see part-time in our treasurer's office, even though they do employ a part-time person. Because if they can't fill that vacant position, at least we can provide them the part-time support. And the other areas right there are just shown additional cuts again in some part-time funding that was listed in the various budgets there. The biggest impact you can see here, and I want to explain this a little bit, is with our Department of Public Works, our sanitation division. We all know right now that we employ several attendants who work on an average of 29 hours a week. And based on the hours that we have at our solid waste sites, and the hours are 12 hours a day, seven days a week, and on the weekends from eight to four. Now, in terms of looking at ways that we reduce costs in terms of labor, we can look at opportunities to reduce that. Spoke with Mr. Slade today in terms of what the operational impacts would be. And even if we decide to change it, you know, to a shorter shift and less hours, perhaps we can save, you know, about $38,000 without any significant impact on the services, on the excellent services, may I say, that they do provide to the citizens. Again, these are just some things that we're looking at here as far as the cost. And again, the big piece of our budget, of course, is to transfer out to the other funds. Of course, our support to education, of course, is a large component of our transfers out. In fiscal year 1920, the transfer amount budgeted was $12,440,000. In the recommended budget, there was an increase of $52,000 for the schools. Going back and doing some things and make some additional adjustments here, you can see that it's shown that if we cut out three cents altogether, that shows that that contribution to the school would be lowered by a total of, not a total of, but an additional $100,000. Transfer to CSA, which is our Comprehensive Services Act Fund. Now, I do want to point out that this is a risky reduction because that's one of the things that we really don't know the cost. We do have a high cost this year in terms of the kids that are utilizing that service. So that's one of the things whereby if we find out that we need to request supplemental funds at the end of the year, then often we have to come to the board to do that. So again, that was a risk, but at the same token, we are lowering that amount by $35,000. And also believe that we can safely reduce the transfer to our Social Services Fund by another $25,000. And just for time's sake, you see the two cents and the one cent and just the operational impact. And hopefully you can see just what the differences are, so I won't go over those numbers in particular. This outlines the remaining of the recommended cuts to other departments, starting with the board on supervisors all the way down to workforce, trying to get everyone to to just step up and say, we can make these additional cuts. Again, not a lot in our operating budget. If you recall, in the presentation, excuse me, in the document that I presented last week, there was a couple of pages that talked about exactly what the county, from a general fund standpoint, spends in terms of operations. We do know that salary and benefits represent a large component of the of the county's budget. And I use an example from fiscal year eighteen-nineteen, and I showed you all the exact expenditures that we spent in the general fund for that year. So altogether, when you when you look at the general fund, if it's nine point four million, you know, over six million maybe salary and fringe benefits, so you're looking at three million that's left for county departments to operate with. So again, looking at some various cuts here, I mean, some of them are very small. The biggest cut you see here is in information technology of thirty-three thousand dollars. And one of the reasons why you see that as a big cut is because there was one position out of all the positions that requested that I did elect to include and not reduce was the co-compliance plan in one position and a planning community development office, because they are already down to positions. And with the amount of work that's going on in that particular department, I just thought it was fitting not to remove that position, even though it has not, to remove that position from the recommended budget. Okay, rounding out the additional cuts. The contingency fund for the board supervisor has typically been budgeted a hundred thousand dollars. We typically use that sometimes during the course of the year. If we cut fifty thousand dollars out of that, it would be a contingency fund, of course, obviously left of fifty thousand dollars. Reducing the rescue squad contribution to the current level, which is currently seventy-five, so as opposed to going to eighty, leaving in at seventy-five. Eliminating additional agency requests, right here, we fund John Tyler Community College, and it hurts to even say that. Virginia VCU, that says VCU, but it should be VSU, I apologize. There's two small contributions combined that we fund those particular agencies for education, so we can eliminate those. Again, the transit service, it was twenty thousand in the initial budget. If we completely eliminate it, that's another savings of twenty thousand. The Improvement Association, a small reduction there of twenty-two hundred dollars. I talked about the library already. Virginia Gateway Region came back with a proposal. Now, based on COVID- nineteen and some of the relief that some agencies may be offering, they came back with a proposal for the county to say that we are asking that our jurisdictions be funded at least one half of our total contribution. So right now, we're funding it at forty-one thousand, two twenty-nine. This would be a funding request total of half of that. So that's why you see that additional reduction there. And that is if the board elects to continue to be a part of the Virginia Gateway Region. And again, eliminate altogether the funding for the Pena Salt and Water. Initially, I had reduced it about six thousand, but taking away the five would would give a funding of zero for that particular agency. So the total, and and we were still off for about eighty thousand dollars there. Let me go back and say that the three cents is roughly eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So when we was asked to go in to look at the budget to see where we can get it to a zero tax rate increase, we had to make cuts totaling eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So after we got through all of these cuts, it was seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Figuring out where we can make additional cuts and looked at on the revenue side, I thought Ms. Wendell did an excellent job in terms of looking at our revenue. We have to be conservative. We know there are impacts as related to COVID- nineteen. So again, we had some losses there in terms of the interest rate revenue, not quite at one hundred percent with our public service. And again, being relatively conservative on some other areas. So we just could not find any additional cuts to go in and do. So the meals tax is one of the things that we said that if it would be implemented, it would help round out and cut that and balance the the budget by giving an additional estimated, of course, is estimated eighty thousand dollars in revenue. And I do want to say that at least our major restaurant in the county has indicated, you know, definitely a support of the meals tax. And those, one of those things that we know that is what we call a visitor's tax, whereby we have a lot of tourists and your visitors that come in in your county, the primary ones, the primary ones who do support your meals tax. And I can add to that, that a lot of agencies who do employ meals tax use their revenue to fund their tourism and their economic development activities. And also for agencies and organizations, I do want to add that the Economic Development Authority, though not a agency of the county, but certainly a authority, did request funding from the county as well in the tune of about a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for operating, and they made that request to the county. Now, again, these are the options, and then the operational impact. Meals taxes up to six percent is what was included in the legislation. Other taxes and fees, and I'm going to show you those in a slide that Ms. Wendell put together. These are just options for the board to consider at some point. Personal property tax, increasing it by twenty-five cents to four twenty-five. If we changed our vehicle license fee from twenty dollars to to twenty-five dollars, it would give us another thirty-three thousand dollars. And machinery and tools tax, which is currently a dollar, if we double that to two dollars, it would give us another thirty-eight thousand dollars. So all of these changes would potentially give the county another two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in revenue, which is which is nearly a penny, nearly a penny. These are the fee changes that are already included in the proposed budget. Now, fee adjustments, typically you want to look at these on an annual basis just to make sure that the county is keeping up with the market and and that type of thing in terms of and looking at our fees that we're assessing for our services. And of course, keeping up with with our surrounding areas. There was a change with the courthouse security fee that was legislation. So that has already been factored in, that would go from ten dollars to twenty-five dollars. That would give us an additional ten thousand dollars that we've already programmed in. From planning fees, estimated revenue associated with making some changes in that area, fifteen thousand dollars additional revenue. And there is another option that we considered to change the fee that we're charging for basic and advanced life support, and those changes are listed there. And this is all insurance recovery. This is no additional monies that we're trying to cover from the patients who have been transported. But this has allowed us to be able to get additional funding from insurance for ambulance billing, and that's at twenty-three thousand that's been plugged into our current budget proposal. Okay, this just reflects that our real estate tax rate increase, you know, as you are likely aware, is the least aggressive and has the least impact on county citizens because we do know that public service does generate the majority of our local tax revenue. Okay, so this is something that we wanted to show again with Sari. We do have a low tax rate, but we're looking at all of our surrendered jurisdictions. So if it stays at seventy-one, and we will still have the lowest there. So we see that we are followed by Dinwiddie at a seventy-nine and so forth for the current real estate tax rate for the various jurisdictions. Machinery and tools, again, one dollar. As you can see, we're the next to the lowest for machinery and tools. And personal property, we indicated we're at four dollars currently. And if we go up another twenty-five cents to generate that revenue, we'll be in line with what Prince George and be right down the middle of this graph in terms of charging for personal property tax fees. Meals and hotels, even though the the county doesn't have a transient occupancy taxes and trying to see whether or not it is the board's discretion to introduce a meals tax to the county. You can see here the various jurisdictions that have those taxes. And the vehicle license fee, which is currently at twenty. And you can see where the we're right low with Dinwiddie and Hopewell. And the proposal was to, a proposal, not the proposal, but just an option to increase it to twenty-five to to give us additional revenue. All right, so that pretty much concludes the the discussion in terms of, you know, what has changed in terms of additional thoughts on closing the the gap that was proposed based on the eight thousand dollar need to reduce it down to a level tax rate. The only other thing, board members in the public that would that I would mention in terms of the the cost, we do know that we look at our CIP, there are several items in our CIP that the county is funding with fund balance. And and one of them being our broadband project, which we have a one point seven million dollar additional local match. And I just want to kind of put that in perspective in terms of the fact that the county, not only with broadband with other projects, have used what we call fund balance to pay for those projects. Last year is a matter of fact, the county paid for the roof on the high school using fund balance. They paid for the initial fiber-to-the-home broadband project using fund balance. We purchased vehicles for our public safety and and have taken care of some other capital projects needs using fund balance. To fund one point seven million dollars on the tax rate, and that's for our broadband initiative. So at this time, Mr. Elliott and members of the board, I just wanted, again, just to present to you those options. They they could be a myriad of things that we can certainly put together and and looking for your guidance to help us to come to a balanced budget that the board and the community is in grants to. The taxes and the fees, as you all are aware, we have to advertise them for a public hearing. And again, at this point, if there's additional services that you would like us to consider for reduction and elimination, we're just asking for feedback from the board supervisors at this time. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins, for your presentation. Thorough job, not without a doubt, very thorough job. You've given the board a lot to consider, to take on a deliberation. And I open up at this time, any board member would like to address Ms. Rollins on the presentation that she's given this evening?
Kenneth Holmes, it was a very good presentation. A lot of hard work obviously went into it. And at this point, I don't see any major areas of questions as far as I'm concerned. If I may.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I'll make one.
Yes, for sure.
The the Improvement Association did take a a cut. There has been discussion about the State Department of Education taking over the the responsibilities of the Improvement Association. And if and when that happens, that means that funding for the Head Start program would be, you know, right in line with with regular budget items in a in the school board budgets. I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Any other board members?
Mr. Elliott and to our county administrator, Assistant Introm. Very good job, great job. There are some situations that I'm sorry that we are having to reduce. But if we don't want to raise the taxes, then we do. But I would support it and also support the idea of increasing those other situations that we can, not exuberantly, but so that we can balance the budget. So I guess we need to decide as a board, after looking at this for you, where we would want to go, if the other board members feel that way. But we do have to get some money from somewhere, and that seems to be probably the least, perhaps, cost on our citizens, and it would be based on individuals more than just on their properties. And with the COVID nineteen, I do know too that communities hopefully will be able to garner some support dollars-wise from what the feds and the state is going to do for communities. I know the feds right now are still up in the air about, and it was unfortunate that they gave money to communities that were five hundred thousand people and over. I mean, here we are under that figure, so that didn't help us. But preferably they will look at, help all communities, no matter their size. So with those situations, hopefully we will have other monies coming in that we may not even have identified in our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Mr. Calhoun or Mr. Drury?
Chairman Elliott, this is Mike Bury. Can y'all, can y'all hear? I think I'm unmuted.
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
A couple of, couple of, couple of areas, and I'd like Ms. Rollins to, and thank you, Ms. Rollins, for the efforts. I know it took a lot of effort to put that together. In the past, the board has talked to the schools about the declining enrollment in in the school system and coming up with a facilities plan. I haven't seen such. I don't think it's been addressed. But I did notice that there were capital repairs, such to the elementary school, HVAC and so forth, any of two hundred and ninety thousand. Until these discussions are held, is it, is it, can some of those be just maintained and take out some of those capital projects, or have they been paid for?
Okay, we certainly can ask Dr. Sims those questions. In the, and that must be in their operating budget, because in their, in the county's CIP for the schools, there are two projects that are being recommended. And these projects are relating to safety issues that you all heard at the work session. And that's in the tune of a half a million dollars that we're proposing to pay for with, of course, capital fund balance that may be left over from the schools, school board budget from fiscal year nineteen-twenty. But in terms of what's been included in their maintenance and operations budget, that is certainly a question that we can pose to Dr. Sims in terms of whether or not that is ongoing maintenance or whether or not is replacement. And that may help facilitate the discussion as to whether or not that's something that they can delay until another year. But I can certainly pose that question to the superintendent.
Yes, the majority of that two hundred and ninety was was a replacement of the HVAC, if my memory is correct. The other thing is, is what about in, and I don't know the interest rates, maybe you will, and refinancing of our past loans is, and I'm not familiar with with the loans. But do you think it would be any opportunity to have it cut back?
Very good question, Mr. Drury. As a matter of fact, the the day that we declared the local emergency, I had a meeting with a financial advisor to to discuss that. So we have not been able to 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 resume those conversations until tomorrow. As a matter of fact, we have a a meeting schedule. If Ms. Wendell, if Ms. Wendell is on, she may want to chime. When we talked about it initially, we we thought there could be some opportunity. But in looking at the way that our current structure was, we we kind of rethought it, at least on the county side, that they may not be as a significant savings. But I'm going to go ahead and ask Ms. Wendell, because I know we had that conversation, to see whether or not there could be some savings realized as a result of the interest rates economy at this time.
Thank you. Yes, we we've had a conversation with the Virginia Resources Authority about some potential savings on a portion. There's only, in order for us to realize savings, the bonds that we've issued have to be callable, meaning that we can call the remaining amount in and reissue them at a lower rate. And there has to be generally net present value savings of three percent in order to make that feasible. And they're they're looking at, I mean, the the amount of savings that they initially looked at was relative. And they're, they're looking at, I mean, the, the amount of savings that they initially looked at was relatively small. But we'll be talking, um, with an outside financial advisor to see if there are any other, um, potential opportunities. But it probably won't be, you know, a, a huge amount of savings. The Virginia Public School Authority bond issue, which, um, we are also paying debt service on, was just refinanced in twenty fifteen, so there may not be a lot of additional call opportunities. But again, we'll, we'll be happy to, and are already planning to look into that, and, um, we'll let you know of any potential savings available.
Thank you. But, Ms. Rollins, my next question is, the, in the, I know in Latch's budget, that was a one hundred and fifteen, ran a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar for, uh, Marina budget, and what I'm saying, I didn't know what that was, and I think it was Marina Budget Consulting or Operations. What is that?
Okay, I'm gonna, um, call on Ms. Swindell to help me with my memory as well. But, um, for that, there are expenditures that are associated with, um, certain repairs that may occur um, at the Marina operations, one hundred and fifteen. Do you recall the other breakdown of that, Ms. Swindell?
Yes, um, tho- those are generally the operating costs, the new operating costs that were associated with the Marina. Um, most notably, fuel costs is one of them. And, um, I'm, I'm looking at my spreadsheet to see if there are any others, but it's generally, I believe, um, you, there were some utility costs as well. Repairs and maintenance, um, and Marina fuel were the, and contractual services were the, the major ones that are included in that. But that was a, that was a new department that we added last year, um, with the opening of the Marina, so that we could capture those off separately.
Understand, so that's not staffing?
No, no.
My, one more question is, uh, do y'all have any idea, and Ms. Rollins, I, I, I know this, you probably wouldn't know this yet, but just any, any cost savings because of slowing operations down that could be, have fund, fund carryover to next year?
Okay, um, another good question. Uh, one of the, uh, strategies that we implemented, um, when we going through the COVID nineteen pandemic is realizing that at some point, you know, you, you may want to go ahead and implement, um, you know, no new expenditures, or, you know, at least, you know, not entering into any new things unless absolutely, um, necessary, trying to curtail expenditures as much as possible. But Mr. Drury and others, on the flip side of that, I think the, the more accurate picture is to look at the revenue side. So even though we may have, for an example, there are savings related to, you know, personnel or, or operating expenditures, you're not using, you know, fuel and electricity and things of that nature. I think the more telling story is looking at the revenue picture and see how that may be adversely impacted by the COVID nineteen. Um, because any savings that you may realize on the expenditure side are certainly going to be wiped away with any reductions in revenue um, that may happen, um, namely, sales taxes is probably one of them. Um, again, interest rate revenue is going to be impacted, and, you know, there could be some other things. Um, Suri is, of course, not, uh, is, uh, more fortunate than some of our other jurisdictions who have to deal with the things like the meals taxes they're not going to get and things of that nature. So, you know, there's definitely some impacts, but I, I don't see where on the operating side, there's going to be a lot of, um, savings because of the side of the revenue.
Under- understand, and, and thank you. Listen, I had a conference call with citizens over here in the Niddon Walsh Bridge District last night, and they, they are concerned, of course, with what's going on medically and financially. And I, I believe they will not be supportive of a real estate tax increase or even on personal property. Um, but I believe they will be supportive, or they will, on meals tax, uh, cigarette tax and that, that sort of thing. So, so that's it from this section, and thanks again for your work.
All right, but thank you, and thank you, um, also, Ms. Swindell, for definitely assisting to help pull this together.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. Do we have any comments from Mr. Calhoun?
Um, Mr. Elliott, I don't have any comments right now, I'm just kind of absorbing everything. This is my first budget. Uh, I'd also like to thank the staff for putting this budget in, uh, together and this, and presentation today. Um, on my side, in my district, um, I'm getting, uh, some concerns about an increase in, um, in the rev, um, excuse me, in the, uh, property tax as well. Um, but, you know, understand we have to do what we have to do and just kind of watch our spending as we go forward and, you know, try to reduce where we can.
Thank you so much, Mr. Calhoun. Uh, once again, I would like to thank Ms. Rollins for, uh, her diligence and hard work in this area. Uh, she's given us, our board members, a lot to, uh, to digest and deliberate over as we uh, come to finalize the budget for Suri County for twenty twenty-one. Uh, and we're going to do our best to, uh, be fiscally responsible. And there's going to be some tough decisions we have to make, uh, from, from our presentation on last week to this week, when we were discussing the tax increase on real estate, a lot of hard work has gone in to show what we can, uh, cut, and especially during this time when the citizens were dealing with COVID nineteen. We want to, uh, make sure that we do what's best for the citizens of Suri County. So once again, uh, Ms. Rollins, thank you very much for your hard work and diligence to do this matter. Job well done, well done. If there are no other, uh, discussions on the board, we will now move to new business. And we have on our agenda for new business, a memorandum of understanding. I believe Mr. Hefty is with us, and he will be presenting, uh, this area on our new business on tonight.
Mr. Chairman, um, this is a request from the Department, uh, of Health for the area, which covers eight jurisdictions, including Suri, that the jurisdictions, um, enter into a memorandum, which would allow, uh, the Health District to request from the county, uh, services to deal with COVID nineteen. Uh, particularly, uh, if they start doing contact visits, uh, to see who has been exposed to the virus and, uh, who they have been in contact with. Um, it is, uh, sort of coming from the state, the Attorney General's Office drafted this agreement. It is, it's voluntary on the part of the county, which is probably the most important part. If, if we have people that we want to, um, have, uh, do these contact visits, if they ask us, uh, we can do it, but we don't have to do it. So it's totally up to us whether we participate or not. The agreement is cancelable, cancelable within thirty days' notice. Um, but, uh, it's an opportunity to, uh, sort of help the Health District, uh, try to deal with the crisis. And, um, so three of the jurisdictions, as we understand it, Greensville, Dinwiddie, and Prince George have already approved this with their board supervisors, city councils. Um, and I think they're waiting for the other, uh, five jurisdictions to do so. Um, and, uh, that's sort of what it is. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hefty, for the presentation on the Creative District Pandemic MOU. Uh, we've, we presented with this at our last meeting, have had time to look over it. Uh, so at this time, I would entertain a motion from the board in this regard of the Creative District Pandemic MOU.
Um, so moved, Mr. Chairman, that Judy Little making a motion. To approve.
Have a motion to approve, have a second?
A second.
It has been probably moving second. Are there any questions or debate on this motion at this time? There's no question or debate. Uh, Ms. Chapman, could you give us a roll call vote, please?
Uh, yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yeah.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman, the motion is carried. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, the Addendum COVID nineteen Local Partnership Agreement Scope. Is that also you, Mr. Hefty?
Yeah, it's sort of, that's part of the agreement, and so by approving what you've done in the last motion, you've approved that as well. So I don't think you needed an additional vote.
Okay, will that take care, uh, the Addendum COVID nineteen, the, the next two, uh, documents?
Yes.
Okay, how about document number four?
Uh, yes, all of those would be in, approved by that motion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, board members. At this time, we move to citizens' comments. Uh, as last, as of last week, uh, during the virtual meeting, we've asked the citizens to give our comment, give comments to the board uh, via email, and we received comments from other citizens, and we want you to know that we take your comments, uh, to heart. We know that you have a heart for your county, you want to see what's best for Suri County. And when we hear from our constituents, it gives us, uh, some guidance and leeway to make adjustments and decisions for the county. So again, this week, because we are in, uh, this virtual meeting, if you have any comments on what, uh, we have discussed tonight and anything in the county, please feel free to email your comments, and all the board members will receive a copy of your comments. At this time, are there any, uh, comments from the board members at large? I'll just ask as we go down, so we won't interrupt or go against each other. Mr. Drury, do you have any comments at this time?
Thank you, Chairman Elliott. Just a, a question to, uh, Ms. Rollins. Um, what, what do you need us to do this evening on the budget? I, I see you have an ad for tomorrow, so.
Yes, sir, yes. I'm, I'm glad you asked that. I was going to bounce back and, 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 and and get some additional guidance, I guess, because, um, and I did not go over the next steps, um, in the budget. But you're correct in terms of, in order to keep the schedule, we do need to advertise, um, the budget on tomorrow, um, the eighth, the twenty-fourth, and that will give us the opportunity to go ahead and have a, uh, public hearing. It will show up in our local paper on the twenty-ninth, next Wednesday, and we can have our public hearing on May seventh, which would be the first Thursday in May. And then following that Thursday, the fourteenth, is where we have set action on the proposed budget, which we do know, we tried to get our, our schools, uh, done by May first, typically by May fifteenth, as it pans out, but that would be the recommendation, is to give the guidance on the tax rate, and that way we can work with, you know, what we've got, you know, we can certainly make adjustments, but at least we'll know exactly, um, where to go with that. Because once we advertise the tax rate, we cannot go up, we can only go lower. Now, i- if, if, if the, if the board's desire, um, you know, we can certainly put in a rate and have more time to kind of work around, um, that and come back with something different, but I'm just waiting on guidance from the board.
Yes.
Chairman Elliott, if I may just speak?
Yes, sir.
I, I know this is not ideal, and I know that as board members, we just, we got a lot to digest. Um, but last year, I believe, we were in a similar situation, and, uh, actually approved the school budget in May and, and improved the, uh, uh, county budget in June, and so it is, I would think it would be an option again, if needed, um, if board members are not ready this evening. And that's it.
If, if I'm, uh, thank you, Mr. Drury, if I'm understanding Ms. Rollins correct, we have to advertise this on tomorrow? Is that correct, Ms. Rollins?
Yes, to, to keep with the schedule that's been presented, to keep the, the entire budget adopted by the fifteenth, fourteenth of May, yes, we would need to proceed, um, with the advertisement, um, on tomorrow. Yes, and in terms of, um, may I add this comment as well? Um, in terms of adopting, and Mr. Drury is correct, in terms, I think we did that one time before, um, where we, we adopted the schools, and then we went back and, and did the rest of the budget. And that would not be ideal for administration, and I have to say that for a couple of different reasons. Number one, it, it gets kind of messy to some degree. Um, and then it, uh, it, it allows staff to have to continue to work through the budget all the way through May and even to June. So it's just, it's very tasking, and, and if we have to do it, we'll do it, but I just thought I would just go ahead and put that comment out there. Um, but I would be more than happy to, um, still work in, in whatever this board's desire, absolutely we would do.
So, yes, thank you, Ms. Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. Drury, for that, but I had to put that out there. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. So if we, if we are to advertise, uh, tomorrow with a, a, an increase in, in the budget, in the real estate, that we are not binding back that, we can come back down? That's what I'm asking.
Mr. Hefty?
You can leave the tax rate exactly as it is now, when you adopt the tax rate in the budget.
Okay, but we can't, if we advertise the tax rate that we have now, we, we are locked in, we cannot, uh, go higher, right?
That's right. So the question is, do you want to, uh, advertise a higher tax rate? Um, and then, you know, have the flexibility as you make decisions to go down from that? Or do you sort of want to lock yourself in now to the, to the current tax rate? From the citizen's standpoint, they, they, from the citizen's standpoint, they probably prefer that you just advertise the current tax rate, but it, it reduces your flexibility to make decisions from now going forward.
Okay, so if we, if we were to advertise, uh, with the current tax rate, the proposal that you gave, Ms. Rollins, uh, with the, uh, different ways to increase the revenue, would that, uh, put us in the ballpark of what we were discussing before as of not raising the tax rate at all and still be able to do a balanced budget?
Um, yeah, um, in terms of, yes, if you all give the okay as far as which one of those options you would like, we can, we can certainly look at those and then make adjustments here and there. Again, if you're looking at those options, the only one that is included in there is the meals taxes. So that gives, you know, we would have to have that in order to balance the way that it is now. But if there are different areas that you want to see included, like in the options two or one, then not in the option three, we need that flexibility to be able to make some additional changes in some of those fees. Um, and if, and any of those that you may be agreeable to, which you've already said, one, which is the meals taxes, but any of those other ones, um, if you're agreeable to it, I think I've heard that you're not agreeable to the personal property one. But if there's any other ones that you're okay with, let us know, and at least we know on our side, we have some flexibility to kind of work some things if we need to. Without, you know, seventy-one cents, at the seventy-one cents.
Do you, do you have a recommendation for the board at this time? Without putting you on the spot, do you have a recommendation for us to consider?
Okay, well, Mr. Elliott, you did put me on the spot. But no, the, um, the, the recommendation, it, it sounds like, um, is that, it, it sounds like it's the consensus from what I'm hearing from the board, based on, um, you know, the current conditions of the, uh, of the economy and, and the feedback in terms of what I've received, in terms of wanting to, to do the tax rate level at the seventy-one cents. And if we go ahead and advertise it that way, it's kind of understood and I appreciate the board's support that if we have to make the hard decisions, for you all to, um, understand and support, you know, the county and staff, um, from those hard decisions that we have to make, and we have to make. And I'm going to tell you, you, you may have agencies and organizations coming at you in suing meetings, saying that they need the money. You got to stand strong, but that would be my recommendation on one hand. Um, but, you know, certainly, the, the direction of the board to do the seventy-one cents, um, then we won't, we'll, we can start tomorrow and do that and work with what it is that we have. And, um, I'm looking real quick at the tax rates, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back and look at my slide to see whether or not there's any other recommendation that we would like to do in terms of the tax. Are you all okay with the, um, adjustment in the machinery and tools, changing that from one to two?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Elliott, can I, can I break in, please? This is Mike.
Yes, sir.
Is, and Ms. Rollins, this, this permitted too. Is there any reason, and this is going to be also a question for Mr. Hefty, could you just get recommendations from the board tonight? We come back, delayed us a week, and come back next week, and, and you present us, we have a copy of this proposed budget, and just slip everything a week right on through the schedule? I, I know the, I know Virginia Code states, and I believe, and Mr. Hefty, tell me if I'm right, that, it says in Virginia Code that you have to approve a school budget, you're supposed to be by May 15th, although some jurisdictions slide that, and then, of course, the county by June 30th. I hate to see us just go through, in other words, when you say advertise, release the advertisement, advertisement tomorrow is for tax rate, a tax rate and budget?
Yeah, yeah, for tomorrow, for, for the advertisement, yes, we will have to release it all on tomorrow.
It's not the, it's, it's not the, it's the real estate tax rate is the only, is the only important one. The other taxes you can increase, you know, at a later point. Those don't have to be advertised. It's the real estate tax that has to be advertised and the budget. And, and the answer is, yes, you can slip it a week if you want to legally.
I'd like to see the whole budget again before we advertise the budget, even if you release the rates tomorrow. But that's just my personal opinion.
Ms. Elliott, this is Tim Calhoun. I'm following what Mike is saying. I, and I totally agree with him. I think we, I would prefer to slip it a week in order to, you know, look at the total revised budget with the changes. It, it's, it's a lot that we've absorbed today and last week, and I don't think I would feel comfortable with a, with a vote on it tonight.
Mr. Chairman, we have April the, I'm sorry, Ms. Little, I apologize.
No, I'm comfortable with advertising since we don't have to, I mean, the only thing that could change the fact that we're not going to use the seventy-one cents is that we were going to increase. So I don't think any of us have stated that they want to see an increase above the seventy-one cents. So, and if that's all we have to advertise, because I do want to look at those other potentials that you shared with us as to some increases in that arena, because I saw a good amount of revenue that can also offset some of that, that we are not going to put on our personal properties. So that was good for me, you know, unless there's someone that has an issue with the seventy-one cents. That would be my vote, is that we would go ahead and advertise the seventy-one cents that is already, I think, agreed upon by all of us.
Just to make clear, you're not voting on the budget, you're not voting on the budget tonight. You have a public hearing. And, and after you get feedback from the citizens, then you vote on the budget. Really, the decision you, really, the only decision you have to make tonight is whether to advertise the seventy-one cents or seventy-two, seventy-three, or seventy-four cents.
Mr. Chair?
I support the, I do support the advertising of the seventy-one cents. And we didn't vote on it, but if we vote to advertise, then I guess we're saying yes. Am I correct?
To the, to the seventy-one cents, yes. Mr. Dury, you had, you had comment?
Yes, I thought when I asked Ms. Rollins, she stated that she wanted to also prepare the budget tomorrow. Is that, did I hear that incorrectly?
Well, the budget ad, well, yes, sir, that, well, not the entire budget, would just be the ad that, of course, shows the seventy-one cents if that's the board's desire. And we do have to do a breakdown of the various categories. And typically, and Mr. Hefty can check me on this, but typically, if we are budgeting, if we're requesting other increases, for an example, let's just use the machinery tool for an example, we typically show the current tax rate for all the taxes in the proposed new rate. So I just, that's why I asked about that one specifically, just to see whether or not we want to make some changes there. But we do have some, you know, breakdown that we need to put into the budget ad for comparative purposes to show, you know, the budget that would be balanced at the seventy-one cents. The general administration, right, general administration, public safety, so the transfers out to the schools, show what the school budget would look like. All of those things are included in the budget ad.
Mr. Chair, if I could just speak up on that, yeah, that, Ms. Rollins, and thank you, that was my understanding, but I did not hear that understanding when Ms. Little was talking. In other words, it's just the tax, it's more than just the tax rate. That's what, why I addressed it to, to delay it a week. It's, it's more than just the real estate tax rate that she will be advertising.
We, well, April the 30th, we have one more Thursday in April, Mr. Chairman and board members, if that's the board's desire to, to, to look at this again on next Thursday. And it's me to receive additional feedback from you all, that again, would delay it one week. So I guess, looking at the calendar that I just switched to, that would put us at just adopting on the 21st of May instead of the 14th.
I think, I think it is the pleasure of all of the board members to, and I think we agree on the seventy-one cents. We just, I think some of the board members want more time to look at different categories and, and cuts and revenue before we advertise. So based upon that, we will delay, I don't think we need a, we don't need a vote on this to tell the 30th before we advertise. Mr. Hefty, do we need a vote on that?
You, you don't. You just need to, need a motion to continue this meeting at the end of this meeting to the 30th.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we will, we will wait, we would, we definitely going to continue this meeting until the 30th. That will be in adjournment. All right. At this time, we will have the county administrators' report.
Mr. Chairman, there's, I do not have an additional report tonight. If I may just ask, if Mr., if you don't mind to ask Mr. Phelps if he's on, and I didn't prepare him for this, that he can just give just a one-minute update or something on the current COVID stats, but I do not have a report tonight. The budget was, the budget was my report.
Thank you. Job well done. Mr. Phelps, I mean, Mr., yeah, Mr. Phelps, are you here? Finally, Mr. Phelps left us.
No, he's here. Not much changes Surrey County. We're still maintaining that four. We've updated the, our updates, you can find them on the website. We do have a, a new email address that people can email questions in to Surrey County. That's posted on the website as well. But other than that, we want, would like people to continue to maintain social distancing, maintain, continue to wash your hands, stay, stay home as much as possible, and just continue to do their part in preventing the spread.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Thank you for doing an outstanding job in these difficult times. If there are no other business to be discussed on tonight, the chair entertains a motion for adjournment until the 30th, April the 30th at 6:00 P.M.
So move, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Second? It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, let it be a roll call vote. Ms. Chapman?
Roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Dury?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried. See you all August, I mean, excuse me, April the 30th, 6:00 P.M. Bless you one and all. Stay safe.
Good night. Thank you all.
Good night.
Thanks so much.